Number eight is proclamation recognizing National Public Health Week 2021. Kami Bremer, Vice Chairwoman of the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move approval of the following proclamation recognizing National Public Health Week 2021. Whereas, the theme for National Public Health Week 2021 is building bridges to better health. And whereas, a top priority for the Board of El Paso County Commissioners is to make our communities and economies safe, healthy, and thriving. And the COVID-19 pandemic has made this goal even more important. And whereas, the mission of El Paso County Public Health is to promote and protect public health and environmental quality across El Paso County through people, prevention, and partnerships. And whereas, the vision of El Paso County Public Health is for all El Paso County residents to live in thriving communities where every person has the opportunity to achieve optimal health. And whereas, while people may be physically distant from each other at this time, technology and virtual platforms make it possible to connect, create, and continue to take action. And whereas, El Paso County Public Health continues to serve the community by continuously expanding services to meet the needs of the public, providing resources and connecting people to accurate, credible, and reliable information, and promoting practices that mitigate the impact and spread of COVID-19. And whereas, El Paso County Public Health strives for a healthier and more resilient future for our community amid the most challenging public health crisis of our lifetimes. And whereas, it is more important than ever to celebrate public health, support and advance the work of public health, and continue to thank El Paso County Public Health staff for the hard work and dedication to keep our communities safe. Now therefore, the Board of El Paso County Commissioners and the El Paso County Board of Health together recognize April 5th through 11th, 2021 as National Public Health Week, done the sixth day of April 2021 at Colorado Springs, Colorado, by the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, State of Colorado. Signed, Stan Vanderwerf, Chair; Kami Bremer, Vice Chair; Loheinos Gonzalez Jr., Holly Williams, and Carrie Geithner, Members, attested to by Chuck Boreman.
Outstanding. And we have a motion and a second. We do have several members from public health in the audience today. Would you like to come up and speak a little bit to this proclamation?
Good morning, Commissioner Susan Whelan, Public Health Director for El Paso County. I am so grateful that we are able to take the time and you are able to take the time to recognize National Public Health Week. We were in a very different situation last year. National Public Health Week happens every year, and we do resolutions or proclamations, and we like to have celebrations usually for public health and the work of our team. So we are doing a few of these proclamations, but I did want to say a few words, if it's okay with you all, to, as a refresher, and I know that there are others that are listening online, our agency was the first accredited health department in the state of Colorado back in 2003. We became the second reaccredited health department in the state of Colorado in 2020. And that shows and demonstrates the excellence for the standards that we meet. It's not all about infectious disease prevention. We do so much more. And I understand that that's where our priorities need to be, and that's where our priorities are. Right now, all of the energy is going into the vaccine rollout, but I do want to acknowledge, and you all know, that it's much more, as you talked about Commissioner Bremer, in our mission. Our mission is to create the conditions with the public health system, which is much more than the health department employees, create the conditions in which every member of our community can obtain optimal health. And that's not just from disease prevention. It's acute diseases, it's chronic disease. We know that mental health and physical health cannot be separated. So public health and the public health system is so much more than the health department, our team. And Commissioner Williams had earlier thanked the entire county team, and I would echo that because it's part of the, the public health system. We cannot do our job alone, and you know, as we've been focusing, that we have been taking a holistic approach with everything that we do, including businesses, schools, restaurants, seeking so much feedback, and through the partnerships and collaboration, determining what the next steps forward are. And we've made tremendous progress together, and we need to keep it going. And so I'm incredibly proud of my team. We have 158 steady, full-time employees. We've ramped up to 200 communities our size with populations of over 722,000. On average, have 256 full-time employees. So you know that, that we are efficient. We have a lot of dedication, expertise, and throughout this past year, my team has not skipped a beat. We have stayed steady. We have stayed focused. We have not been distracted from a lot of what has been going, going on or said about maybe misinterpretations or misguided anger towards local public health and what authority we have or not. But I just wanted to make that point because my team, I can't tell you how incredible they are, working 24/7. They are so dedicated. You enter a field of public health because you want to help people, not because you want to shut down people's livelihoods or do any harm. And I think that we were able to have a few of our team members here, epidemiologists, make up our team, medical doctors, communication professionals, public health nurses. We have a lot of different expertise, and hopefully we can take a photo here later. I wanted to read just a couple of comments or snail mail that I get. I will tell you, I appreciate opening the mail these days because it hasn't always been this way. I mean, there has been a lot of elevated anger, there has been lawsuits, there has been, it's been grueling. So when I open the mail these days, I still get kind of a reaction like, what is this going to be? And we'll address it, but I want to take the time only to read a few samples of what I'm receiving through snail mail and also through electronic mail. This shows you that throughout El Paso County, people appreciate the work of local public health in addition to all of our other great first responders and healthcare providers and teachers. But I do want to take the time to provide a little bit of this. And I just know from the postage of, of where these folks live, if that's their address, and this is one, I believe, that is in your district, Commissioner Geithner. Dear Mrs. Whelan, I wanted to tell you about my experience at the Vaccination Clinic at El Paso County Public Health South. I could not be more impressed with the organization and professionalism of everybody involved in such a huge task. I am a retired Los Angeles police officer, and I have spent a career working with the health department, social services, fire departments, and a host of other government agencies. What I observed firsthand at the clinic from everyone involved was second to none. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate the sacrifice that your department has made over the course of this pandemic, not to mention the risk that each of you has faced in the course of your duties. I wish I could individually thank everyone involved in all aspects of the vaccination clinic. I would also like to acknowledge Marini Claber, she's a regional epidemiologist with our agency, who I can genuinely say has the best interest of the public at heart. I know Marini would be a valuable addition to any organization, and I feel you are lucky to have her in yours. Again, thank you for your organization, for everything that you do. Sincerely, and I won't mention the name, but, because they're sending it personally to me, another one. Dear Mrs. Whelan, I am writing to loud your, you and your team. Thanks for you and your highly professional team. I experienced a flawless, which is underlined, vaccination process, 3/7/2021. I'm sorry, yeah, 2021. Sign up, directions, follow-up, well-staffed facility in Fountain. It was quite hassle-free. Kudos to all. Thank you. Thanks to that, and she's appreciative that she got the J&amp;J. And then she's telling me a little bit about her experience that she's well aware of such a, the intricacies of the, the operation. I sing your praises to all, singing local public health praises to all. If I can ever be of service, please call me. And she has her, her information there. And just a couple more. Received an email from one of our AMR vaccinators, because we utilize a lot of volunteers at our points of dispensing. An AMR vaccinator said that this was the most organized of any she has been to or has served in, and this, this person has worked all over the state at these points of vaccinating. So that just tells you that the clinics that we run are very much appreciative, and these folks that have experience are complimenting. One other comment, Mrs. Susan Whelan, I want to let you know Lisa Pals, she's our regional, she's our Emergency Prevention and Response Manager. I want you to know that Lisa's efforts in getting vaccines for the elderly at our church went above and beyond the call. We have an 80-year-old woman who had tried for two days to get an appointment and was unable to navigate through the maze due in part to her limited computer skills. My wife worked with her for about two hours and was able, was unable to get an appointment. When I called the county health department, I was put through to United Way 211. I was told to try the same organization we had been trying. When I said I wanted to talk to someone from the county health department, she said she could give me their, she could not give me their number, but I would have them contact me. When she hung up, I had no expectations of getting a call back from the county. Lisa called back within an hour and said if we can email her a list of names and phone numbers, she would contact them. She also contacted me later in the evening. Besides the 80-year-old woman, Lisa also helped three other elderly included, included in the list provided to her. Appointments were set up for the next couple of days. A job well done. Thank you for hiring such dedicated people as Lisa, and please give her, Lisa, our thanks. And this is just a sample, and my folks go above and beyond to be a service to the public. And I want, you, you all know that. And I want more members of the public to know that, that may not be familiar with local public health, because the team of public health that we have is incredibly beneficial to the health of the entire community and not only in a crisis response for the pandemic. So thank you so much for taking the time to celebrate with us a little bit. I do think that that's important when we work so hard that we need to have some celebration and lift us up and, and keep on going because we still got a, we have a lot of work, a lot of work to do, but we've made tremendous progress, and that is going to continue to accelerate. We are going to get continued increases of vaccine supply, and we've closed the gap of the vaccine shortage, and so we're, we're going to accelerate, and hopefully we'll be able to open another mass vaccination site up on the northern side of Colorado Springs, El Paso County, to serve that public. Because what is interesting to me is that with the mass vaccination site at the World Arena, they're doing a tremendous job. They're not all county residents, El Paso County residents. And so when you look at the numbers, we need, and we have been expanding, we need vaccination sites throughout El Paso County. We have nearly 100, but since we have the largest population, we need more mass vaccination sites so we can accelerate our efforts, because we talk about it's a race against the variants, and, and we need those resources. So I will take any questions, or if any other members of my team would like to come up here or, or say anything, I welcome you to. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And I'd like to also make that offer for other members of the public health team, if you'd like to come up and say a few words.
Good morning. Deanne Reiberg, El Paso County Public Health Deputy Director. And this morning, I just want to thank you for your support over the last year. When we entered into this pandemic response more than a year ago, I don't think any of us could have anticipated what the following year would bring, all the challenges. But also, our theme this year for National Public Health Week is building bridges. And the bridges that have been built over this last year are truly remarkable. We've partnered with elected officials from city and county in this response, with municipal partners, schools, business, and I think really over the last year, our public health response has demonstrated that public health network that is more than any one agency. It's really the community coming together in a response to serve our community and to do it together and overcome these challenges. And that is something that I'm incredibly proud of with our response here in El Paso County. So many challenges have come our way, and together, we have navigated that so well as a community. So I thank you for your leadership during this last year. And then I'd also like to just share Susan's remarks and credit to our team. Behind those of us who are here are another nearly 200 staff members who have worked tirelessly in this response. And the number of late-night calls that we have had together over the last year and weekend response activities is innumerable, but they have been there through all of this to support our community, and that is the type of commitment that I think is, just demonstrates the import of public health in our community, to have that type of dedication and that strong core of public health team members who are here to serve our community. So thank you so much for recognizing that and recognizing Public Health Week. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the audience? Oh, yes, outstanding.
Dr. Robin Johnson, Medical Director, El Paso County Public Health. I would be remiss if I didn't just take the opportunity to say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to have served with this organization in stepping forward into our community to really advocate for the health of our community across agencies, across sectors, across the whole of our community and the diversity, and for your leadership and the ability to work for our county. And so I can't say anything more eloquently than Ms. Whelan and Deanne Reiberg have stated. So I won't go into much more detail other than to express my gratitude for the opportunity to have served with your leadership, with this team, and for our community. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience? And hearing none, let's bring this up to the dais for comments from the elected officials. And Commissioner Williams, if you can hear me, if you'd like to make some comments?
Yes, I am ready. So I really want to, I really appreciate honoring our public health department. You know, this, when I first came in as a commissioner, it seemed like we went over to the health department for our introduction, they did a lot of programs, it was fascinating. And their biggest issue was a hepatitis A outbreak amongst the homeless. They were spending a lot of time out in homeless communities, making sure that they were vaccinated against hepatitis A. And then, of course, we were hit with the 100-year pandemic, and we've never been, none of us had ever been through a pandemic before. Many of the laws in place, I feel, were still left over from the last 100-year pandemic in 1919. And so it became quite a problem for us. I'd like to thank our health department especially, but I want to take a moment to thank some members of our community. We worked with the Office of Emergency Management, the United Way, the Chambers of Commerce, the Monument City Council, the Fountain Town, Fountain Council, many other individuals. We've also worked with our city council, and they've had an awesome response, and we've also worked very closely with our mayor, John Suthers. I really appreciate the perseverance, though, of our own staff, and it's a long list, just even the senior staff. Lori Segal, Diana May, Leon Kelly, Robin Johnson, our public, our public information office, Ryan Parcell, Natalie Sosa, and Michelle Hewitt, Deanne Reiberg. Our hospitals, the UCCS College of Nursing stepped up, and also Kenny Hodges did great work as a, working with our health department. I will say, we've had anger, tears, harsh words, and exceptional frustrations, sometimes with our governor, sometimes with our state legislature recently introducing a bill trying to remove commissioner powers from the Department of Health. And that's been frustrating because while the Department of Health sees the medical side of the community, commissioners are elected to see the economic side of the community. We've spent a lot of time crying with businessmen and fathers who weren't getting their weddings for their beautiful daughters. But most importantly, the public health employees, a group of such hardworking individuals who have put up with a lot, from people calling to complain. We went from probably, you know, a few phone calls a day to a gazillion phone calls a day, and many of them were angry. And they worked really hard to learn and to be patient with our public, giving answers as quickly as possible. And I just wanted to say, kind of borrowing from a business I was able to tour last week, they've had a stellar response. They have had, they have treated this response with great attitude, but also great altitude, showing that we can reach new heights no matter what the circumstances. So thank you to our public health department employees. We look forward to working out of this process and working into different items of public health that we need to in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Geithner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say a huge thank you to all the work that has, has gone into this. Susan had so many great words for all the things that I know that you guys have gone through and experienced. I think that there has been a lot of conversation and maybe political pressure that has, has come down and created so many of these letters and phone calls, and so many things that you guys have had to deal with that are maybe not, maybe not typical. And I just appreciate the handling of that with grace, and, and just acknowledging the kind of stress that that puts on all of you, and really appreciate the hard work. But I also want to specifically thank you for your holistic approach, for realizing that there is no one-size-fits-all for our community, and working hard to inform people but work with them, understanding where they are coming from, as we are talking about our businesses that were struggling, and most specifically, after our conversation last week with, with charter schools and understanding what they are going through. It is evident, and, and I've received incredible feedback from that group, that they know that you care and that you are looking for ways to work together to, to get everyone through this situation in the best way possible. And that is completely invaluable, to have that kind of a relationship with our community and for them to have that, that trust in, in, in public health. So thank you so much for all the hard work, for all of your employees, and all those who are, are working to move our community forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want to thank all the health professionals and the health service workers, all the great work they've done in a very, very difficult year, and to our public, local public health, all the great work you've been doing, and your staff, and every, from top to bottom, it has been so professional, and the work they've been doing, going above and beyond to help our county residents. I've been lucky enough to have been a member of the Board of Health for my first four years as a commissioner and continuing even now, and have gotten to see up close at the great work and the professionalism that they do for our community. And again, I just want to thank you for that. It's, it's been wonderful to see that in a very difficult year, and to know all the countless lives that you've saved because of that hard work and professionalism and expertise. Thank you.
And Commissioner Bremer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am pretty sure I've said this before, but it can never be said enough because, quite frankly, the words, words don't cover the thank yous. And I'm so glad that even nationally, this week is set aside to think and bring attention to the work of public health and what it is you do on a day-in, day-out basis, notwithstanding 100-year pandemic. So we are incredibly grateful for, as Commissioner Geithner said, the way in which all of our public health staff has, has really stepped up and responded in a way that we're just so fortunate to have here in El Paso County. You know, the theme this year, as Deanne said, is, is building bridges, and Commissioner Williams gave a great, pretty exhaustive and extensive list of some of, some of those bridges that have been built, some of those partnerships. I wanted to point out a couple of others that maybe weren't on that really good list. It was like checking them off, as you said them, Commissioner Williams. But, you know, a lot of the partnerships, we looked, you all as staff, looked outside the normal, your, your normal walls, the normal partnerships that you have with, with hospitals, you strengthened those, you strengthened the ones that, that kind of already existed, but you looked outside the box a little bit to figure out other places to partner. And you did it in such a, such a creative and swift way, and I think it allowed, it allowed this community to really, to really thrive, and everyone come to your help in helping get out messages. So one of those that comes to mind to me is the, the partnership with the mask campaign with the Colorado Springs Conservatory, their TikTok videos and all kinds of things there. But the other group that, you know, Commissioner Gonzalez and I represent here is, is the Board of Health, the local Board of Health. And I am very, I'm honored to serve with the people we do there, and I hope that our guidance has, has provided you all as staff members with, with a pretty global picture. And I'm just so proud to be a part of that very diverse Board of Health, and I'm proud of how all the public health staff took input from all kinds of different points of view with that, and again, handled it with such grace that I couldn't be prouder of. You know, I think this proclamation, it's not just for the extra work that a pandemic required in 2020 and 2021, it's for the work you do every day. And to have kept up with the majority of that or known when and how to pivot in a way that wouldn't take needed services away from our community members is just stellar. And the other partnership opportunity I missed, sorry, was all of those who came to us to request variances and went through the very difficult process. And I watched as you took each one and worked alongside, you know, business owners or key industry leaders to make sure they had all the information, tools, and resources they needed, and you had all of the information to go and advocate on their behalf on what they could safely do. That is a huge piece of the building bridges. And again, just so, so grateful for how you all do it. I think Susan said in her comments something about how her staff goes above and beyond, and that's absolutely true, and they do that because they see their leaders doing so as well. So all of you in, in management at the health department, you're inspiring, you're inspiring to your staff. Honestly, you're inspiring to me, and I think to many community members too, per the emails that you're now receiving. I'm glad they're, they've taken a positive tone. And on that note, going the extra mile, I, I know that there are some tea lovers over at the Department of Health, if you're ever all in the same building again, but I also, there's a, there's a yard of tea sitting there for you all, and with a thank you for going the thank you for going the extra yard. And let's, let's get this over the goal line now, and I'm deeply appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Geithner. I appreciate the comments of all of my colleagues. And I, I would like to express my appreciation as well, and just talk a little bit about the challenges that we had this last year and going on into this year. First of all, what a journey. Wow. I, I think what I saw with our local El Paso County Public Health Office was nothing short of remarkable. You partnered with everybody. I mean, you partnered with the city, you partnered with us, you partnered with our own facilities office to make sure that citizens, when they visit El Paso County offices, can be safe. You partnered with nonprofits. You partnered with the state. You partnered with everybody that was willing to partner with you in order to get us through this. I'm going to make the point, I think you are the glue that held us together. A very special role that took place because of this pandemic. You know, the work that you have done is nothing short of remarkable. I just looked at your website this morning, and you have to look every day, because the numbers go up fast on the number of vaccines that you administer daily. And so the number's there, 282,000 citizens in El Paso County, 174,000, 282,000 vaccines administered in total, 174,000 vaccinated, 113 of them fully vaccinated, and 98 sites to administer vaccine, done in a collaboration environment that really is almost unparalleled, because some of those are publicly administered sites, and many of those are privately administered sites. We just called out all forces, and you did that. You became the glue. And I appreciate, Susan, the letters that you read this morning. You know, they're very uplifting, and it's good to hear those things from time to time. The citizens that actually have a willingness and are willing to go far enough to write a letter to express their appreciation. That's, that's just great. And you know, I think, I hope that many people actually go to the El Paso County website, maybe give you a call after this pandemic is over, and learn more about what public health does for our community. You know, it's not just about the pandemic. Of course, that's been the primary, almost the exclusive topic that everyone's been talking about. But you deal with food health, you deal with animal health, you help us deal with rabies issues, you do septic tank inspections, you deal extensively with children's health and family health, you work on immunizations of a wide variety of types, you do radon testing, you do tuberculosis screening, you test our water to ensure that our water resources are safe for us to drink. There's an enormous number of things that the 200 people of El Paso County Public Health do. Sometimes you don't get enough credit for it. But that's why we're here today on Public Health Week, to thank you and to express our appreciation for the hard work that you have done. I hope when things settle down later on this year, and I'm very hopeful that will happen, you all get an opportunity to take a little bit of break, a little bit of a break, take a little bit of a breather, get back to your families, because we all know you've been working so hard. Get your batteries recharged, come back to the office, and get back to the business of keeping us safe in El Paso County. My hat's off to all of you for the amazing work that you've done, and this proclamation is very well-deserved. Thank you so much. All right. Are there any other comments from any of the commissioners? All right, hearing, go ahead, please.
I was just going, going to add, I mean, we're always going to, going to miss some partners, but I wanted to point out too, that public health, you know, you, you talked about your 200 at this point employees that you have, but the, the county has thousands. And you've also partnered with each and every one of our departments to make sure our employees stayed safe, and for that, I'm very grateful, because we're kind of the stewards of their health, right? Health and well-being, and I'm very grateful for that, and I know that has taken a lot of, a lot of work, really with, I see Brian Olson up there, with facilities and with other partners, and getting you what, what you needed to really care for, for our own as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, let's proceed with a vote on the proclamation. Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Geithner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Bremmer.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that passes 5-0. Again, congratulations. I understand that you would like a quick photograph, so let's go ahead and proceed with that at this time. And we'll bring the proclamation forward for that.